All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 24, 2025, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city councillor, council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementing the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. So with that, I will go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Beruzzi, here. Commissioner Doe, present.
Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrick, here. Commissioner Sillen is absent. Commissioner Silverstein?
Present.
I am Chair Schindler, and I'm present. That gives us six commissioners in chambers at this moment, which is a quorum. Commissioner Sillen is absent, but expected. The next item on our agenda is our reports and announcements section. Mr. Prada, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler, members of the planning commission. A few updates and announcements from staff this evening. So first, the city council on its March 11 regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled to review the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the 320 Sheridan Drive project. So that project will be reviewed that evening by the city council. Before that, though, the council is holding a special meeting next Tuesday, March 4, to allow the council to review and discuss the selection criteria that were used during the city's housing element update process, basically kind of how, in terms of city-owned properties, the downtown parking plazas were selected as identified parcels to move forward with for potential housing sites. So at that meeting, the council won't be taking any formal action, but it is an opportunity for the council to provide direction to staff, if necessary, to analyze any additional city-owned sites. So it's a lot of background information that will be reviewed that evening by the council as a study session item, so special meeting on March 4. And that concludes my reports and announcements.
Is that special meeting going to be combined with the city council meeting on March 4, because it's a Tuesday, or is that going to be at a different time and place?
It's a council meeting. It's a special meeting scheduled, and the only item on the agenda is to review and discuss the city process for selecting city-owned parcels as housing element sites.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about any of those announcements from commissioners? Okay, I see none. Do commissioners have any reports or announcements? Okay, I see none. Then let's go ahead and move on to the next component of our agenda this evening, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will certainly have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So, Mr. Hochleitner, could I please turn it over to you for instructions to the public on how to participate in our general public comment period, and then to begin that period?
Just a note for the record, Commissioner Sillen arrived at 7:05. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a comment card located at the back of the room and hand it to me. I only, I don't have any public comment cards for general items, and I don't see any hands raised at the moment.
Let's just give it one more moment.
Still no hands raised and no comment cards.
All right, thank you very much. With no speakers indicating interest, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda, and move into item E, the consent calendar, which is our next item. This evening, there is one item on our consent calendar, which is the approval for the meeting minutes for the January 27, 2025, planning commission meeting. Mr. Hochleitner, could I turn it back to you for public comment on our consent calendar, please?
Once again, if you would like to participate online, please click the hand icon on your screen, or if you're in person, please bring me a comment card. I don't see any hands raised, and I don't have any additional comment cards.
Thank you. Then we will close public comment for our consent calendar, and I will ask fellow commissioners, does anyone wish to pull this agenda item from the consent calendar? All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Farrick, I believe.
Yep, motion to approve.
We have a first to approve the consent calendar from Commissioner Farrick. Do we have a second? Commissioner Beruzzi, second. We have a first and a second to approve the consent calendar. I will go ahead and call a vote. Commissioner Beruzzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is seven commissioners in favor. The consent calendar passes. All right. We will now move into the public hearing component of our agenda, item F1, which is the first of two public hearing items. This agenda item is regarding the use permit revision for 332 Barton Way. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit revision for an existing, non-conforming two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot in the R1U, or Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District, and determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. The original use permit was granted in 2006, and the revisions include a ground floor addition at the front with a new second level deck on top. All right, and Mr. Prada, I believe you are speaking on behalf of staff for this project this evening. Are there any updates to the staff report?
Yes, thank you. I'm stepping in here for Thomas Rogers this evening. There's no updates from staff. We're happy to answer any questions. The homeowner is here and can introduce the project briefly, and that concludes my report or updates for the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to any clarifying questions, I would like to welcome the homeowner and applicant, just to, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Peter Layan.
Just in case there are folks online, let's just be sure we've got the microphone lined up. I think you got it.
Hello, my name is Peter Layan. I've been a Menlo Park resident for 25 years. I'm here with my wife. We appreciate the work that you do, and I wanted to just explain for a minute the context of this, of the project today. We were last here in 2006, when my wife and I decided we had a family, we expanded our house, put a second floor on, and it's been great until recently. Our kids are now teenagers, and they congregate with their friends in the living area. There's a kitchen, a television, the phone's going. It actually is quite boisterous, and so we want them to continue feeling comfortable bringing their friends and their communities into the house. So the idea that we came up with our design-build team is to put a room in the front, and the idea is that the television will be there, we will be back, there will be separation for the family, which should solve the problem. The only other design element is that we talked to our design folks about, the first, that new room has to tie to the roof line of the existing structure, and the best way to do it, it was decided, was to put a small deck there, which adheres to all the setbacks for the house. We'll make sure, we've made sure with our design-build team, that the existing structure, or the new structure will fit and feel and structure and form with the existing structure. We've reached out to all of our neighbors, all of our adjacent neighbors, and we've heard nothing back, and we're here to answer your questions. Our architect, George, is also on the phone. Anything else?
Thank you for being here. I'll just ask, do commissioners have any clarifying questions at this time, since we have the out here? Commissioner Silverstein?
Well, not a formal clarifying question, but before we start deliberating, I just want to disclose that I live between 500 and 1,000 feet of this location. I do not plan on recusing myself, because I don't have any financial interest, or feel like I would be, have any conflict of interest for the project, but I want to disclose that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We will do public comment, then do commissioner discussion, and ultimately move to a motion. Mr. Hochleitner, could you please call for public comment on this use permit for 332 Barton Way?
As a reminder, if you would like to participate online, please click the hand icon, or if you're calling in, click star nine on your keypad to let us know that you have public comment, or if you are in person, please bring me a comment card. Don't see any additional comment cards, and there are no hands raised online.
All right. Absent requests for public comment. I will go ahead and close that component, close public comment for this agenda item, and move the discussion back to the dais, and ultimately for a motion regarding this use permit. Do commissioners have questions, either for staff or applicant, or comments? Commissioner Sillen?
Thank you. Question for staff about this hearing. So is it correct to say that if this home was not built under a use permit, this hearing would not be required? It's only because they previously got a use permit when they did the expansion in 2006, and now moving forward, even what I would see as a relatively minor change require a hearing? Is that correct?
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's a good one. It's a good one to clarify. So given the scope of work here, yes, this scope of work in and of itself would not have required a use permit, based on the amount of work in remodeling and expansion to a non-conforming structure. However, in this case, yes, because there was a previous use permit, staff evaluated the proposed changes, determined these are not in substantial conformance of that approval, and I think we identify in the staff report some of the reasoning for that. It's partially the size, the location, specifically in the front, and the expansion towards the front property line. So all the changes, taken together, staff determined needed to go to the planning commission for a revision to that previous use permit. But yes, independently, if their previous project did not need a use permit, the scope of work here would have not triggered that, given its scale.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my comment here is just that, obviously, the homeowner clearly has experience dealing with this, which is probably good in terms of setting expectations on what's involved and how long it might take, but generally, I wish things like this could be done without a hearing, since, yeah, there was already a use permit. Well, based on what we've heard previously from staff regarding how use permits work, it seems like at some point, we created this substandard lot requirement, and therefore, everything after that, that was on a substandard lot, meeting certain requirements, whether it's a new home construction or a significant remodel, has to get a use permit, which then subjects the homeowner to further hearings any time changes are made, which seems fairly cumbersome, given the homeowner's context and what they're looking to do. That being said, appreciate you being here and putting everything together. I think, I appreciated the copy of the outreach letter in the report. A little piece of feedback is that I personally found the plans slightly hard to follow compared to other ones we've seen, but again, minor change, so not a big deal. I'm happy to support this project, pending other commissioner comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Silverstein?
As a follow-up question to Commissioner Sillen's, does that use permit status follow this property indefinitely for the next 50-plus years?
Yes, that's correct. Use permits are on the property, run with the land. Yes, correct.
I have a minor question for staff regarding the process for future FAL calculations. There's a note in the plan that just says that a different treatment of the space associated with the stairs could have been used. Would a future owner of this house be able to make their own calculations for the FAL, rather than having to be bound to anything that was in these plans?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, so certainly, as part of any future project for any potential expansions or modifications, yes, the Floria limit could be recalculated. In this case, the designer, architect who prepared the plans did not elect to remove the stairs from the calculation, so Floria limit on the second level is not counted in the city's code. So the project was compliant regardless, so we said that is fine, partially to help move the project along and through the process, since it didn't affect the compliance, but certainly, that can be adjusted with any future project that comes through. Absolutely.
Thank you. Vice Chair Eric?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I was also taking a look at the outreach note. I have a question that I'm not sure is for staff or the applicant, it might be both, but I noted in the outreach note, it had a projected timeline, that it would take three to five months for use permit approval, which would, was anticipated to be late fall, which I'm assuming means late fall 2024. We're now in late February, late winter, I guess, and so I would appreciate if either staff or the applicant or both could comment on any particular factors that have us here in late February versus late fall.
I can try to start. Appreciate the question. I don't have all the details, as I mentioned before, the, Thomas Rogers is the project planner, he's actually taking over for a staff member that left the city who was previously working on the project. I think a lot of factors go in to the overall timeline, and so any statements regarding timing are always tentative, you know, even when our team members speak with prospective applicants, you know, during counter hours or during initial inquiries on projects, you know, everything is tentative. There are a lot of factors that go into a project schedule, from plan review, you know, staff does have specific timelines to meet for plan review, but there's also a response time from the applicant team, and so depending on when those responses come in, and how long it takes for an applicant, an architect, designer to respond to city comments, you know, that is a factor, too. So it is a multi-disciplinary process between applicant, architect, and city staff. So there's a lot that goes into that. We certainly strive to review projects when they are submitted to us in a very time-efficient manner, and get the comments out as efficiently as possible.
I mean, if that satisfies the question, I'm happy not to add, but I guess since I'm standing here, I'll speak.
Please.
The first thing I want to say is that, you know, we haven't worked with you, but Thomas has been great, very thoughtful and responsive, but in this case, what happened is, and you're right, I mean, we thought we wouldn't be here now, we thought we'd be here in the fall. What happened is, we submitted, I think, a set of plans initially, once or twice. There was another person we were working with, Christine Beggin, and then she went on vacation, and then she left, and then we had to start again with Thomas, and there was just a couple of times where that delayed it, and then we missed a few details in the plans, and so it had to go back, like, it just got really extended, for all those reasons. But no fault to the staff, in our opinion, just, it was just a series of delays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do other commissioners have questions or feedback, comments? I see none, or potentially moving to a motion?
I would like to move to approve as per the staff report.
We have a motion to approve the resolution as written by staff from Vice Chair Eric.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Sillen. Seeing no need for further, just nobody raising their hand for further discussion, I will call the vote. Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sillen, please.
Just want to clarify, the second was from Commissioner Silverstein.
Thank you. That was from Commissioner Silverstein. All right. The vote. See if I can get the names correct this time around. Commissioner Beruzzi, yes. Commissioner Doe, yes. Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen?
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is seven in favor, and the motion passes. Congratulations. Best of luck to you with the remodel and the teenagers. All right. We will now move on to item F2. This agenda item addresses the use permit architectural control below-market rate housing agreement and environmental review for 3705 Haven Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit, architectural control, and below-market rate or BMR housing agreement to demolish an existing single-story, 10,361-square-foot commercial building, and construct an eight-story, multifamily residential bonus-level development project with 112 units on a 0.66-acre parcel located in the R M U B, or Residential Mixed-Use Bonus Zoning District. The project would use the city's bonus-level density development allowance for increases in density intensity, or gross floor area, and height in exchange for the provision of community services, community amenities. The proposed project would include a total of 14 BMR units to satisfy the city's BMR ordinance, provide community amenities, and qualify for state density bonus laws benefits, which include additional units, along with incentives, concessions, waivers, and parking reductions. Determine this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Public Resource Code Section 21083.3 and Sequel Guidelines Section 15183. The proposed project includes three development-related heritage tree removals, which the city arborist has reviewed and conditionally approved. Ms. Khan, I believe you are speaking on behalf of staff this evening, and is there a staff presentation as well as, and I believe the applicant team is here as well, too. So I turn it over to you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Schindler, fellow planning commissioners, members of the public, and everyone in attendance this evening. Staff would like to notify that staff did receive 14 emails from members of the public in support of the project. We have printed out copies of the compiled emails received, and they are available at the back table should anyone want a copy. With that, I'll start off with staff presentation, first followed by followed by the applicant's presentation, and then public comments and deliberation on the project.
Thank you. We will probably just add in some, if an opportunity for clarifying questions before we go to public comment. So please proceed.
Tonight's staff is presenting a proposal for a 112-unit residential project located at 3705 Haven Avenue. The project requires a use permit for the proposed bonus-level development architectural control for the design of the building, below-market rate housing agreement, and environmental review. The property is located in the bayfront area of the city close to the intersection of State Highway 84 and Marsh Road. In a corner, it is a corner lot, and it's zoned as residential mixed-use bonus. West of the property, there are two apartment complexes, Anton and Elon, and more commercial types of uses along the north, south, and east. Currently, there is a single-story commercial building, which is proposed to be demolished to make way for an eight-story, 112-residential apartment building, which will be using both city's density allowances as well as the state's to get to the higher density proposed. Of the 112 units, 10 would be very-low-income BMR units and four moderate-income units. This level of affordability allows the project to be eligible for the use of state density bonus law for a total of 72.5% density increase above the city's maximum zoning density. The project will be providing 104 parking spaces, of which only 56 are considered as compliant parking spaces. The remainder will be compact-sized. The project requires a minimum of 112 spaces, but has requested a waiver to reduce the requirement by 50%. The project would feature a community room, swimming pool, a business center, and rooftop terraces as tenant amenities. Since the project is proposing over 20 units per the city's BMR requirements, it is required to provide 15% affordable units based on the maximum density allowed per the zoning. The maximum units allowed per the zoning is 66 units, and 15% of 66 equals to 10. The applicant is proposing seven very-low and three moderate-income units to fulfill this requirement. Additionally, the applicant is proposing three very-low income and one moderate-income unit. This allows the project to utilize state density bonus and add 46 more units. Three of those units will be provided as community amenity to fulfill the requirements of a bonus-level requirement. The project's proposed levels of affordability under the state density bonus law allows them additional density over the maximum allowed by the city, along with three concessions and unlimited development waivers. Concessions are defined as reduction in site development standards or modification of zoning ordinance requirements that result in actual identifiable cost reductions. The proposed three concessions are to construct a new above-ground utility pole rather than replacing an existing one, to not dual-plumb the building, to exceed the 75% rent cap for all BMR units. Waivers are modifications to a development standard that would physically preclude the construction of the project with its proposed density. The proposed nine waivers for this project are to increase the maximum height, increase the maximum allowed floor area ratio, decrease ground-floor height, decrease ground-floor transparency, reduce the number of required parking spaces, reduce private open spaces, modify parking stall dimensions to provide compact parking stalls, modify BMR unit size, and to modify minor modulations. The BMR agreement captures all 14 BMR units proposed, which include 10 inclusionary and three community amenity and one unit for the purposes of state density bonus. Out of all the 14 units, 10 would be very-low income and four would be moderate income. The Housing Commission recommended approval of the BMR agreement. Details of the meeting are highlighted in the staff report, which would be page 44 of 147 of the packet. We recommend that the Planning Commission determine that the project is exempt from CEQA under the Community Plan Exemption and adopt a resolution approving the use permit, architectural control, BMR housing agreement, and approve the community amenities proposal for the three very-low income units. This concludes staff's presentation. We have the applicant team present with us tonight. Ruby Huang representing March Capital and Michelle Loeb, the architect of the project. Michelle will be providing a presentation on behalf of the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the applicant team. Please proceed. The microphone may need to be adjusted.
A little shorter here. Can you hear me okay?
A little bit louder. Can we check just to confirm that that's?
How about this? Is that better?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for sharing, Fatine. If you could go to the next slide. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michelle Loeb. I'm the principal at LDP Architecture in San Francisco. We are a woman-owned small business enterprise and specialize in multifamily developments all over the Bay Area. The project-sponsored developer team was founded in 2014 and is also San Francisco-based. They will be operating the property and currently manage residential properties across five states. Next slide, please.
Excuse me. Can you just potentially, can we get some assistance leaning that microphone in just a little bit more so that everybody online can hear?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So as mentioned, the site is located near the 84 and 101. This area has a mixture of warehouses, commercial and residential uses, along with a proposed eight-story hotel just north of the site. Next slide, please. These are photos of the existing one-story cement-plaster office building and parking area to be demolished. Next slide. This slide is an overview about the project. As mentioned, it's an RMUB district, and the site is 28,808 square feet. Some items to note, oh, go back one. Thank you. Some items to note, the allowed density is 100 dwelling units per acre, 66 units in the base. And as mentioned, the development is utilizing the state density bonus law. It will be providing 10 very-low-income units and four moderate-income units. The total proposed unit count is 112 units, which has a density of 170 dwelling units per acre. The proposed gross floor area is 157,232 gross square feet. Also on this table are specifics about the open space, which I'll discuss further in the presentation. Next slide, please. So the preliminary SB 330 application for this project was submitted in May of 2022. The EIR consultant DJPNA was approved by a city council in July of 2023. The first Planning Commission EIR scoping and study session was December of '23. And also wanted to note, recently, ownership has reached out to neighboring properties this month, notifying them of the current state of the project. And you can see a couple other highlights listed here. But brings us to today's meeting. Next slide. Some of the sustainable features of the building. It's targeting lead gold. It will be providing electric vehicle charging stations. It'll be solar-ready, have water-efficient fixtures, features an elevated ground-floor level to mitigate sea level rise, and has on-site storm water management. Next slide. So the design intent of the building is a contemporary take on a courtyard building. The building mass steps back per zoning requirements with a base height of 45'11" to the top of parapet. 55 feet is the maximum allowed in this area. High-quality exterior materials add visual interest and try to emphasize the different volumes, along with various window sizes and patterns. Next slide. These are the elevations for the project. The east elevation has the central courtyard at the third-floor level that Fatine had mentioned. And this can, you can also see the stepping back of the fifth floor that allows sunlight to get into the courtyard and also provides for roof deck amenity space for the residents. Next slide. The south elevation has the primary pedestrian entrance, and you can see the stepping back of the massing. Next slide. The west elevation features undulating bays and floating balconies to create visual interest along the west and also the north elevation. Next slide. And on this elevation, you can also see the eighth-floor roof deck in the upper-left corner of this elevation. Next slide. So as mentioned, a variety of materials are featured in the development to emphasize the massing of the building. Building materials include cement plaster, fiberglass panel, box corrugated metal panels, which are offset from one another to create more visual interest, woodlook aluminum slats. The building also features sunshades and metal guardrail elements. Next slide. These are a couple diagrams about site improvements. It highlights the new street pavement, new sidewalks, new driveways, and landscape planting strips. And the project is also undergrounding the utilities there. Next slide, please. Gathering space with a seat wall and a free little library is proposed at the corner of Haven Avenue. It's in a little niche that's been carved out from the building facade. And next slide. There is also publicly accessible open space all around the building. There are feature gateways with integrated lights leading to sculptural seating at the north and west facades. Mural or tile mosaics will create framed elements of interest along the walkways as well. And there will be a variety of native plantings and low-water-use plantings. Next slide. The private open space for the residence is layered throughout the building with resident amenity spaces opening onto the third-floor courtyard. Common resident roof decks are featured at floors five and eight. And as you can see from the plant palette here, there's a variety of Mediterranean-style native and drought-tolerant species proposed throughout the project. Next slide. This list highlights some of the amenities that are on-site, and there are a couple of renderings of the fifth and eighth-floor roof deck levels. Next slide. This diagram highlights the pedestrian circulation around the building as well as bike and vehicle access. Note, the driveways are located in similar conditions to the existing with one at the south and one at the east corners of the site. Next slide. This is a mix of the units ranging from studios up to three-bedroom and associated square footages for each. On the right, you can see the variety of 14 below-market rate units being provided. The sample of these are highlighted in orange on the diagrams below on this slide. Next slide, please. The parking is accommodated in the first two-floor levels, accessed by those two driveways I mentioned. There is also 17 short-term bike parking spaces that are provided at grade outside and 168 long-term bike spaces located on the ground floor for resident use. Within the two, first two stories, there's 104 unassigned spaces. This includes 56 standard stalls that meet Menlo Park's requirements and 48 compact stalls, which we've requested a waiver for. If we didn't provide the compact stalls, we would only be able to accommodate 99 parking spaces between the two floor levels due to size constraints. We have 16 electric vehicle supply equipment spaces, and all the remaining parking spaces are low-power, Level 2 EV-ready. Next slide, please. So moving up the building, amenity spaces are shown in purple, residential units in yellow, and BMR units in orange. You can see the private open space mentioned on floors three, five, and eight. And you can also see the stepping back of the building as it goes up throughout, you know, the floors. Next slide. To close, thank you for your time, commissioners in public. Please let us know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into public comment on this agenda item, let's just do some clarifying questions from commissioners here. I do have a couple of quick clarifying questions, most of which are for staff. I'll try and move quickly. Ms. Khan, can you confirm a couple of things? Just verifying that the timeline that's been laid out means that SB 330 definitely applies to this project? And then related question, confirming that this is the third of our five public hearings? Are those both correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And there's a reference in the staff report that directs the Planning Commission to consider whether the project complies with requirements under the state density bonus law. But I believe based on everything else that's in the staff report as well as the presentations and already in discussions already happened here this evening, both staff and applicants are in agreement that the project does qualify for the state bonus density that's been requested. There's no, it's not a question of whether it applies or not.
That is correct. Staff has evaluated the proposal under which the project applies or qualifies for the state density bonus law and the three concessions and unlimited waivers.
Thank you. You've almost anticipated just my quick follow-up question. So staff analysis has concluded that there's no basis to deny the three concessions and the nine waivers is also necessary. Just to be clear for us as a planning commission, is it correct to assume that any concerns about the concessions or waivers would not represent a legal basis for rejecting the use permit or architectural control unless we deem them to be a detriment to health or safety to the community?
Yeah, and I'll help answer that question.
Please.
Thank you, Chair. This is Eric Phillips from the City Attorney's Office. And yeah, just basically to confirm what you were implying with your question that the state density bonus law gives very narrow parameters that would be a legal basis to deny the specific concessions and waivers. As you articulated, we'd have to identify a specific adverse impact to health and safety that couldn't be mitigated without denial of those requested modifications. The other potential bases would be if one of the requests violated federal or state law or if there were a significant and unavoidable impact to a historic resource. Through staff's analysis, we haven't identified a basis for denial that would fit within that framework. And then, as you mentioned in your question, what that means is unless the Planning Commission itself identifies one of those specific bases to deny the concession or waiver that's allowed under the state density bonus law, there would not be a basis to deny or require changes in the project based on those waivers or concessions. They would really are limited to those specific factors that are enumerated in the state density bonus law.
Thank you. I think that's very valuable and instructive feedback. I'll also confirm my assumption that, notwithstanding everything that's just been discussed, there certainly is value to the commission, to the public, to the applicant, to others in the developer community, to discussing the way in the developer community, to discussing the waivers and concessions for the purposes of informing future projects and evolving city regulations. So there is still value in discussing these things in those contexts.
Yeah, and to build on that point, I certainly agree. And then, the way that the project has been proposed with its incentives and concessions have been analyzed through the environmental review and are definitely fair game to consider and give feedback and to understand just from a public process and transparency standpoint about what is applicable. But even when we were in the study session, early in the process, as the environmental review process was kicking off, Commissioners gave feedback onto the design and comments about the building that the applicant was able to incorporate. Those conversations continued in Housing Commission. So there are opportunities to discuss and analyze that are still within the framework of the discretion that the Planning Commission has.
Thank you. You've also anticipated the next direction, which is just confirming my understanding that the way that the need for an EIR was analyzed and the Community Plan Exemption Checklist, or CPE, that those things are essentially governed by a very tightly prescribed set of state and city regulations and that those have been followed.
Yes, thank you. And so, what CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, says is that we have to analyze the environmental impacts of the project. CEQA gives guidance to the environmental topics that are relevant to that analysis and that should be covered. It also gives guidance into what thresholds would be used to evaluate whether an impact is significant or not. And it's correct that we did start viewing this project through the lens of preparing an EIR. We began scoping it that way and took comments. But as the scope was refined and we did further analysis with the environmental consultants, it was determined that the project would be eligible for the Community Plan Exemption Checklist, as you mentioned. And what that means is that there would be no impacts that are peculiar to this particular project or project site that weren't already analyzed in the Connect Menlo EIR or the Housing Element Update subsequent EIR. And CEQA and the Housing Accountability Act both have been amended and clarified recently to emphasize that when it is possible to find a project exempt from CEQA, that you then must find that project exempt from CEQA. You can't subject it to additional levels of environmental review. But although that, when we say exempt from CEQA, maybe it sounds like it wasn't fully analyzed, this particular exemption, the Community Plan Exemption, is documented with a checklist very similar to what would be done with an EIR. It's just that the point of comparison are the impacts that were already analyzed with the general plan and the housing element EIRs rather than starting from scratch. So each topic that is identified by CEQA was analyzed for this project and concluded that there were no peculiar impacts. So that's how it was able to qualify for this exemption.
Thank you. Given that we very frequently have questions related to traffic, transportation, or air pollution questions, I just want to apply those to the framework that you just laid out to be sure we have clarity here. Again, that the city and the consultants that were used to do this analysis worked within a prescribed framework for calculating and describing the impact on traffic and air pollution. And that's a prescribed framework that comes essentially from the state and state organizations. And it's possible that, for example, a number of people might have experienced, might experience more traffic as a result of this project, even if the environmental analysis, this prescribed framework concludes that the impact is not significant. That's not to say that there wouldn't be an experienced impact.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. And there's two components to your question that I think are relevant. The first is that the state mandates that transportation impacts be evaluated using VMT or vehicle miles traveled, which is different than congestion or delay at intersections. And that's often how people experience traffic, as you said. So it definitely is possible that the state-mandated framework for environmental analysis can be less than significant, even though people would still experience traffic, as you said. Though I do want to reassure the commission and the public that the transportation analysis that was done for this project not only looked at those CEQA-mandated topics, but it also looked at level of service and the way the streets would actually perform so that there would be the opportunity to evaluate the way people experience traffic as well as how the state mandates that it be analyzed under CEQA. And there are conditions of approval related to the transportation system to ensure that any traffic generated by this project continues to meet the city's standards for performance.
Thank you. I appreciate all of those clarifications. I think they're very helpful to Commissioners and potentially to anybody in the public who has similar questions about that whole range of topics. That was almost the end of my clarifying questions, but I will drop it and move on to give Commissioners, other Commissioners, a chance to ask clarifying questions before we move on to public comment. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. I had a clarifying question through the chair to Ms. Khan. During your staff presentation, you said something about all BMR units exceeding the 75% rent cap. And in my notes, I had put that the concession was to exceed the rent cap for moderate-income units. And so I just wanted to clarify which it is, or, you know, just my understanding in what it is actually, the concession is regarding the rent cap exceeding.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Doe. So yes, the rent cap applies to all the BMR units proposed for the project. However, it would greatly impact the moderate-income units, more so than the very-low-income units.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you explain more about how it would greatly impact them? That feels like a teaser.
Yeah, I can help with that. So, the city's BMR guidelines require that affordable units be rented at defined levels based on household income. The deeper the affordability is, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. The lower the income of the household, the deeper the affordability and the lower the rent is required to be. And the city has prescribed upper bounds for how much a very-low-income household would rent a unit for, a low-income, a moderate-income. But it also has an extra requirement that says that the upper bound must also be no more than 75% of a market rent, market-rate rent for a comparable unit. So, as a practical matter, the very-low-income units that are proposed in this project are rented to households with 50% of the area median income. Their rents are historically always far below market rents and 75% market rents. That city's cap isn't implicated. With moderate-income units, because those serve a higher income range and households can be 110% of AMI or even up to 120, their rents are allowed to be at a higher rent and can be closer to market rents. And therefore, it could be possible that the default rent would be higher than that 75% of market-rate rent cap that the city usually applies. So the concession here to charge the maximum rents that the state defines as the affordable rents could have the impact of having the moderate-income units pay closer to a market rent, above 75% of market rents, but still within the defined boundary of how much rent can be under the Health and Safety Code, which is the standard that the state uses to define affordability.
So practically speaking, what would the implication of that be? You still have to income-qualify by being less than 120% of the median income? And is it just possible that there wouldn't be people who qualify on income who are willing to pay the rate that...
So that does happen from time to time. And typically, what we see is then developers will look to reduce their rents anyway, because that's what the market is telling them that they have to do. There's an incentive not to have empty units in your building. But it gives the developer the option to try the market first and charge those higher rents if they can command them.
Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on that. The market-rate rent that the 75% threshold is set based upon, how is that determined, the market-rate rent?
So the city's housing department makes that determination closer to when the project is getting its certificate of occupancy. It will look at comparable market rates, market rent rates, either in the building or comparable buildings, and make a determination based on that when it applies.
Thank you. And is that done just at the outset, or is it done annually throughout the lifetime of the project?
Yeah, great question. It would be done at the outset, and then when those moderate units turn over and are on the rental market again, it would be done at that time. So it's not necessarily annually, but during that kind of lease-up phase. And there would be, you know, multiple lease-up phases during the lifetime of the project and the BMR agreement.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, just to clarify one more time, what Commissioner Doe was asking, so the concession being requested is not only for the four moderate-income units, but it's for all 14 units to be exempt from the 75% limit. However, they will still be subject to the, I guess, State Safety Code Section 50053, which caps the rents based on the percentage of AMI that the affordability level applies to, correct?
That's all correct. And as I've been working on affordable projects for 22 years now, and I've never seen a very-low-income unit be within 75% of market, at least in this market.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. I have one clarifying question for staff, and then we'll have one for the applicant. I think this will be for Ms. Khan. On page 17 of the staff report, there's specific direction to Planning Commission to, it's page 17, second paragraph. "The Planning Commission should consider the Housing Commission's recommendation on the BMR proposal inclusive of the requested concessions and waivers." And just prior, there was a big paragraph describing the discussion at the Housing Commission. Can you explain if there's some different direction that you're giving us, or is that just kind of a normal, of course, we need to consider the BMR proposal?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Farrick. So, at the Housing Commission, there were discussions about the project overall, of course, and the requested reductions in parking stall numbers as well as unit vacancies. There was concern about whether the city needs to consider if parking is considered as an amenity versus an utility. The zoning ordinance requires parking to be unbundled, which is what the project is proposing. What that means is that the units are not prescribed a parking space, which could be an added cost to the rents. So the Housing Commissioners, they did have some concern. They did recommend approval of the BMR agreement to the Planning Commission with the three points that were highlighted on page 17 of the staff report.
Thank you. So in other words, there is kind of specific direction from the Housing Commission for us to kind of pay attention to those details?
Yeah, and the Housing Commission didn't recommend any changes to the BMR agreement for you to consider, or they didn't direct staff to modify it. But they did want to highlight those policy considerations that Ms. Khan just outlined to go along with their recommendation, because they felt it was different than the normal BMR agreement that they see because of the specific waivers and concessions. So I think that's why it's written that way in the staff report, is just to highlight those policy considerations that accompanied the recommendation for approval.
Thank you. And then, for the applicant, my question is very specific. I'm just trying to kind of get a better handle on some of the, in the project plans, it was an 85-page link document to the staff report. On page 11, it's the sheets that are related to fire diagrams. And I was curious about, I hadn't, I just would love some clarity on what it is indicating. It's sheet GO.O3A, or zeros. And again, it's like page 11 of 85 of the project plans. And it's where it shows, it says, "Overhead power line for scope, SCD." And I would love some clarity on what that is telling us, and if there's anything we should know in particular with those high-voltage power lines that I think the plan is indicating.
Thank you for the question. So where it says, "Existing overhead power line for scope, see civil drawings," it's relating to what I was referencing earlier of undergrounding utilities. So the fire diagram is something that's often included in planning documents as we start to meet with the fire department to review concerns. And oftentimes, their concern is about overhead power lines. So that's why we had shown that in these diagrams, to express that they are there and they are being proposed to be removed. So that sheet is to help them understand for their roof access from the fire trucks.
So you're not going to, so those will be removed or undergrounded?
Yeah, so they're going to be undergrounded for the majority of the site, and it allows for the fire trucks to gain access to the terrace roof levels.
Great, thank you. That's wonderful. Thanks.
That's all.
Do other Commissioners have clarifying questions? Commissioner Peruzzi.
I had questions for the applicants about how you're approaching parking and use of other on-site amenities and the pricing of those things for people using the BMR units. In other words, I know this came up, I think, in the first time the Planning Commission reviewed this, to consider whether or not there might be a sliding-scale fee for BMR residents for the parking that's unbundled. I'm also curious about whether there are on-site facilities that might charge a membership fee or something like that. And I've heard that in other new developments in our city that have BMR units, there are really nice health facilities, for example, that are not accessible, that are prohibitively priced for inhabitants that are living in BMR units. And I'd love to have us maybe stop making that mistake if we can. So I'm curious if you could talk about how you're approaching that.
Sure. Thank you for the question. This is Christian Sebrian, Land Use Counsel for the applicant. The unbundled parking will be charged at the same rate scale. It's an amenity be charged as a, if you want to add it on to your rent, you can... It's an amenity be charged as a, if you want to add it on to your rent, you can. It'll be treated the same as the market rate units. And for other site amenities, there's no, there's no, there's no facility with an additional charge. So there's complete same access for all residents, which is how you want the community to work.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. I will have some follow-up questions on that topic when we get into the more discussion component of our agenda. Other clarifying questions?
I have a curve ball for the staff that I should have asked earlier, but I'm going to see if they know. And if they don't, we'll figure it out. This is more about the infrastructure surrounding the project. And I know that right now there are bike lanes on the specific stretch of Haven Avenue that runs parallel to the 101. But I also know that in each segment that runs perpendicular, including the one in Menlo Park, and then I think the one farther up, there are not bike facilities. And I also think there's not right now a safe designated bike crossing of, for 101 for quite a while, right? You can't really, there's not really a good bike facility on Marsh, correct? I had heard that there were plans in the works for some kind of county-funded undercrossing connecting with Haven Avenue in Redwood City. And I'm wondering if staff have any sense of whether that's still on the books or not? And I apologize again for not thinking about this and preparing, letting you know ahead of time I was going to ask about this. But I'm just, when you look at the site access plans and you're thinking about non-vehicular access or, that does sort of show up as a concern.
Let me, let me, let's see, I can start here. And I'm not sure, Commissioner Peruzzi, if I have all the answers to, to every question there, but regarding the segment between the intersection of Bayfront Expressway and Marsh and Haven, there is a project ongoing right now to connect that intersection with the existing bike infrastructure that is on Haven Avenue after the kind of jog. So, so that is ongoing and that is in the works and that is part of our CIP. And I think it's supposed to be finished this year. Any other coordination with the county, though? I'd have to look into that and follow up with these separately. Perhaps I can try to do that. If you ask the question again later, I might have an answer. But in, in terms of the infrastructure between the main intersection at, at Bayfront Expressway and the project site, that there is an ongoing improvement project for that frontage. But any other kind of coordination with the county, I'm not, not familiar with at this moment.
Okay, thanks, that helps.
Seeing no, oh, Claire, one, one, please. Commissioner Sellen, clarifying questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I joined the commission after the initial study sessions. I just wanted to clarify that it seems the project originally had some commercial space and I just want to double check that that commercial space is no longer included in the new proposal. I'm seeing nods from the developer. I'll leave it there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will have more questions on that topic later. Seeing no further clarifying questions, Mr. Hawk Lightner, could you please call for public comment on item F2?
As a reminder, if you would like to participate online, please click the hand icon in the lower left-hand corner of your screen and we will activate your microphone. If you are participating via phone, please click star nine on your keypad to indicate if you are, if you have a comment. If you have more than one person speaking on your account, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we'll make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. If you are in the chambers, please bring me a comment card. At the moment, I have one comment card from the chamber and I have a couple of hands that are raised online. Our first public commenter is Nels Delander and he's with Carpenter's Local Union 217.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Nels Delander and I'm a representative of Carpenter's Local 217 of San Mateo County. I would like to tell you the importance of having this project at 3705 Haven Avenue to be built by a responsible general contractor that utilizes apprenticeships, requires healthcare for workers and paying construction workers a living wage. By utilizing apprenticeships, you're getting professional trained workers not only trained to do the task at hand, but for it to be done safely. By having trained apprentices that are trained in safety, you're giving better chances the workers can come home unharmed and able to provide for their families. Providing healthcare is also a must for all workers. By using general contractors that provide access to healthcare with no cost to employees, you're giving them the peace of mind knowing if an accident does happen, that they're not covered and won't be in $1,000 in debt. Also, by paying workers an area standard wage, you're giving workers a fair chance at life. How much does it cost to live in the Bay Area? How dare unresponsible general contractors exploit the worker class just to make profits on their backs? These are human beings that deserve a fair wage for all the hard work they put in. Anything less is disrespectful and show what the contractors are really about. All I'd like to see is this project be built by a responsible general contractor that takes care of their workforce and has to exploit them for profit. This is a good sized development and I would love to see workers be taken care of properly when they work here in the city of Menlo Park. Hope we can make Menlo Park a better place for workers where the exploitation of workers does not happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment.
Our first online speaker will be Ally Saferman. I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Ally Saferman and I'm calling in on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. We are a member-supported nonprofit that supports housing at all income levels in order to address the housing shortage, affordability and displacement crisis. We had the opportunity to review the project at 3705 Haven Avenue and we proudly endorse the project. We also organized a petition of 73 supporters of the project. The project maximizes the use of available land by converting a commercial site into 100% residential development with state density bonus allowances to create 112 new homes. The eight-story 85-foot structure makes the most of density opportunities to meet housing demand. By exceeding local inclusionary housing requirements, the project provides 10 very low-income units and four moderate-income units, ensuring a broader range of affordability. The commitment to diverse housing options strengthens community accessibility. The city of Menlo Park is required to build nearly 3,000 new homes to accommodate its regional housing needs allocation arena. 3705 Haven Avenue makes important progress towards those goals. We also appreciate that the project does not have an excess amount of parking in order to prioritize homes over parking. Please move this project forward without delay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is David Beam. I will unmute you and you can start speaking.
Good evening. My name is David and I believe that Menlo Park should be a leader in solving the housing crisis. 3705 Haven is a responsible, well-planned project that will help meet our housing needs. Keeping the site as it is today doesn't help anyone, but adding homes does. Let's please do the right thing and improve this project today.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Annabelle Zoo. You can unmute yourself and begin speaking. Annabelle.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Annabelle. I have been a member of this community for 24 years and I am strongly urging the Planning Commission to approve this housing project. We are in the midst of a housing crisis with many renters and workers being priced out of our community, making it difficult for families and individuals to secure stable housing. This project, to me, represents an opportunity to address that need by adding over 100 new units, including affordable units for lower-income residents, which is crucial for maintaining a diverse and thriving community. The development will also revitalize an underutilized site, turning it into a vibrant and productive space that benefits everyone. Furthermore, by adding much-needed housing, we can ease some of the pressure on our local housing market and help prevent further displacement. If we fail to take action now, the housing shortage will only worsen and more people will continue to struggle. I ask that you approve this project and take a critical step towards solving this ongoing issue.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is calling in via phone. It's area code 505, 5731011. You can unmute yourself and begin speaking. I don't know if you're speaking.
My name is Joey Goran.
Go ahead, we can.
My name is Joey and I support 3705 Haven's project because it aligns with Menlo Park's long-term goals for growth. It adds housing in the local, in locations surrounded by jobs, transit and commercial uses, reducing sprawl and traffic congestion. Projects like this create a more vibrant and sustainable city. Please approve 3705 Haven and allow Menlo Park to grow responsibly.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Chweene On. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Oh, hi. My name is Trinan. I support this project as it's like adding like the housing opportunity to the area and also it's bringing like more business for sure because of more housing. So please approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our next speaker is Emma. You can unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Emma. I'm calling to support the approval of 3705 Haven. Currently, the site is an underutilized one-story office building and parking lot and I believe this is the best use of land in such a growing, such a growing city like Menlo. So I believe replacing it with 112 new homes would make it a better use of the space and bring much-needed housing to Menlo Park. So let us turn this underutilized lot into homes for people who need them and we should approve this project without delay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our final online speaker is Blas Rodriguez. You can unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, everybody. My name is Blas Rodriguez and I'm calling to support 30705 Haven because Menlo Park is really growing a lot and we really need more housing to keep up. Just are being added. And if we don't build enough housing, people will start to commute longer distances or leave the area altogether because they can't afford. This project helps keep our workforce local. It reduces traffic and it supports a more sustainable future. Please approve 3705 Haven. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
At this time, I don't have any additional online hands raised and I have no additional comment cards from the gallery.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment on item F2 and bring the discussion back to the commissioners for questions, commentary, and ultimately a motion with regard to the proposed resolution from staff. I will take one second to just, again, since there are many moving pieces here in this discussion today, remind us what we're making decisions about. We're making decisions with regard to a use permit, architectural control, a BMR agreement. And certainly, all topics and questions are encouraged for discussion tonight, as always. I also think that tonight's discussion has the potential to be particularly useful and constructive with regard, in addition to the project tonight, with regard to future project proposals and future city regulations. That's actually just, I'm reminding us that it's, that's the, the spirit of some of the feedback that the Housing Commission had in their discussion of this particular project. Specifically, they made some of the things that were raised could be valuable consideration for future updates to our BMR guidelines. And to borrow words that were used by the Housing Commission, things that we discussed tonight help the development, the developer community understand what qualifies for a good project and potentially even what qualifies for a great project. So with that context and recap from our friends at the Housing Commission, I open it up for more discussion and questions from the commission. Commissioner Silverstein.
Sure, I have a couple comments. First, I love the bike storage room. It's exactly what I would expect to see in a project that hopes to encourage bike ownership and usage. Second, I think one miss that I would want to mention is that there's no retail or a commercial component to this project in a mixed-use district. Our Bayfront neighborhood doesn't really much have a retail presence at all. And while I'm absolutely in favor of the project and increased housing and all of the benefits that it provides, I continue to lament the fact that these residents and residents of other projects that have been approved in that same neighborhood recently will not have anywhere locally to go for their groceries or restaurants, cafes, shops, anything like that. I, I fear that we're either going to require people to drive for all their basic needs or live out of an app, neither of which develops a real sense of neighborhood and culture or community. The last comment I had, have, is not about this project in particular, but I noticed that the traffic impact analysis expects this project to generate an incremental 396 trips and there are some mitigation effects. But I want to comment that there is no consideration whatsoever on the vehicle miles reduced that having increased density in Menlo Park will provide. I know the consultants are just following their rubric and formulas, but I do find it backward that when calculating the actual expected vehicular miles traveled, we don't consider the thousands of people who today are currently driving from very far away to Menlo Park, that this would enable them to live much closer to either where they work or go to school or any of their various activities. All that said, I support the project and given that I certainly don't believe that creates a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, I'm happy to vote in favor when others have said what they want to say.
Other commissioners have. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. First, I want to say how excited I am to see this project get to this point. I remember in December of 2023, I believe it was, when I first saw this project and how exciting it was, and I can't wait to see it become a reality. I do have one comment. I would appreciate if staff could put up the slide in the presentation with the project timeline. Thank you. Okay, I believe when we talked about this project last, I asked a question around the timeline and whether or not it would be possible to condense the timeline at all with specific actions. And at the time, I believe it was someone, I believe it was a member of staff, but it might have been the applicant, who said that there was a period of time where the city had to go out and find a SEQA consultant, find an environmental consultant. Based on this timeline, I'm estimating that that whole process took charitably six months, but probably more like nine months. And it's particularly, I think, relevant here, given that ultimately the environmental consultant determined that a full EIR was not required. And so getting an environmental consultant on this project faster would have sped up the project by something like six or nine months. At the time when I asked that question, I believe staff pointed out, or maybe the applicant pointed out, that other cities have on retainer or sort of have have a list of pre-approved environmental consultants and that the city of Menlo Park does not have that. And so every time a product like this comes, the city has to go out and do an RFP and then hire a consultant and get a contract signed and so on and so forth. I'm wondering, or sorry, I am requesting if staff could comment on whether or not the city has evolved in this regard or whether or not we're making moves to have environmental consultants on deck and pre-approved.
So yes, it's been quite some time since we last came to Planning Commission. That being said, in December twenty twenty-three, when we came with regards to the NOP and study session for the project. In short, yes, the city has evolved. At the time when we were getting a EIR consultant onboard, we did not have a preferred list. But since then, upon hearing these kind of comments from applicants, we have evolved in creating a short list of consultants that we reach out to with regards to any sort of RFP requests.
That's great to hear. I would like to thank city staff. I would also like to thank the applicant for helping us learn for future projects. That concludes my comments. I'm very happy to support this project when the time comes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. I would also like to start with many thanks for hosting a highly useful study session on this project. It makes a massive difference. And I think if there's a takeaway I'd like to broadcast is to please always have a study session because then you get to this point and there's a lot of exciting improvements to said project rather than seeing it for the first time and trying to, you know, make all kinds of compromises that don't need to be made when you have a process such as this one. So thank you for that. And I also am excited to see these meaningful and material improvements that were made to the project. It was already good back then. It's even better now. I wanted to comment and ask a potential question, just appreciating the two entrances for vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians into the project. Better circulation, better safety, better access, better convenience. And I'm just, I guess, I know you'd mentioned that it's the same as the condition today that there's two entrances. Is there anything else that inspired two entrances? Just curious, you know, I don't know if there is, but just I'm wondering if the applicant would like to answer that or was it just always something that was a normal thing to do?
So the two entrances to the garage is partially because of the amount of parking that is required and trying to fit it. So we were trying to essentially reuse the existing driveway locations because they were as far from the corner as possible. There's a stop sign right there at the corner, so you don't want congestion backing up. And so having the two separate entrances, the floors are not connected on the inside. So one ramps up to the second floor level and the other one is a direct entry to the first floor level. So it sort of spreads the cars on the site and then also hopefully helps with traffic around it.
Great. And if, while you're up here, I have a follow-up that is also parking-related question. Well, first a comment, but stay because I, it will be quickly followed by a question. Also want to just thank you and say awesome with one hundred and sixty-eight long-term bike storage parking spaces and seventeen shorts term bike spots. I noticed that the compact spot question, it is the difference with six spots and was it just a calculus that going even six spots lower to ninety-nine spots, or maybe I'm doing the math wrong, five spots lower, would be a deal breaker? I guess I'm just curious why you chose the compact spots at one hundred and four versus standard-sized spots at ninety-nine?
I think part of it was communicating with staff and the planning code requirement of having one-to-one parking, so trying to accommodate that the best we could. A lot of other jurisdictions do have options to include compact spaces. So it just allowed us to provide for as much as we could within the space that we had.
Thank you. And then in your experience with other projects across the Bay Area, do you feel like, I mean, is there anything to support that compact spots will be as useful or would you prefer to provide standard spots so there's less, I don't know, tightness and kind of challenges of, on behalf of the residents that do need a place to store a vehicle?
I think in other jurisdictions, the compact spaces are utilized just as much as the standard spaces. Since the spaces are unbundled, it could be addressed when the spaces are rented perhaps as well.
Great, thank you. And then I guess a question for staff that's related is is it feasible or possible to provide flexibility in the use permit to proceed with what they're proposing today, but give them the flexibility without having to go through an onerous process? Should they make a decision to convert some of the compact spaces to standard spaces, meaning a potential loss of up to five spaces?
Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. That is a very good question. Definitely, city does not recognize the compact stalls as being compliant spaces, but we do recognize them as being parking available for the project. If the applicant considers providing ninety-nine standard stalls, that would bring the project closer to the number of compliant parking spaces for the project. It may not be a one is to one ratio that the applicant is trying to provide by providing some compact spaces, but it would definitely bring the project closer. And with the waiver request, they can definitely ask for a reduction in the number of parking spaces, which they already have asked for.
Great. So yeah, in other words, that is possible. We could build that as a matter of flexibility into the use permit?
We can, we can talk a little bit about that, especially if it's, if it's flexibility that the applicant is interested in. We'd also point to the condition that does allow for modifications to project plans and approvals, changes that are substantially consistent with the approvals that you do tonight or that are classified as minor modifications can be done administratively at the staff level. So to the extent that we understand the parameters of what substantially consistent changes might be with respect to parking, we can look at that as well.
Thank you. And then Ms. Khan, I'm wondering if you might be able to shed more light on the Housing Commission discussion on this same topic. Were they did they have a particular point of view that they were recommending or any kind of or was it more related to the price sensitivity of the BMR units and the cost of the unbundled parking?
The, the Housing Commission conversation was the latter, which you just said, Commissioner Farrak, that they were they wanted the, to maximize the parking availability so that they, I think, my impression of their conversation was that they preferred the, the higher number, even if some were, were compact. But they were concerned that the price of unit, of parking spaces when added to the rent of the unit would potentially make the units less accessible or less affordable, which is in part why we see the language in the BMR agreement to provide some backstop. If, if for some reason the lack of one-to-one parking or the cost of parking makes it so the units aren't being rented, then there are measures to require the developer to offer additional incentives, eventually potentially even including free parking associated with the unit so that the cost burden of parking isn't a disincentive to filling those units. But that was, that was very important to the Housing Commission that they, they were definitely concerned about the cost of parking and whether that would create a disincentive for future residents to use those BMR units.
Thank you. That's helpful. So, okay, so it sounds like there is sort of a, a solve baked in already.
Yeah, that, that certainly was, was our hope was that the extra provisions in the BMR agreement that the applicant agreed to would speak to that affordability concern and provide the backstop so that the units would be, would be used.
Great. Thank you. And I'd be curious as we proceed here if my fellow commissioners agree that building in flexibility in the event that the project as they operate it discover that they'd rather have more standard spaces. I don't know what the future of automobiles are, but there are trends sometimes where they're particularly large and I don't know what's going to happen. If more small spaces is better or fewer big spaces is better, but I guess I would just not want that to be a hindrance to the success of the project. And so I guess I'd be curious if you all would want to build in a flexible component to, to the applicant and if the applicant would want that flexibility as well. So before, I know we're not going to, you know, necessarily have a lively discussion on this, so I'll just finish off my other comments. Oh, one thing that also I noticed and I was kind of fascinated by was pages sixty-three, you know, in that range of the plan, the project plan set, there was a lot of really, you need to do, you had to do some flood zone mitigation engineering. And I'm curious if, if you'd want to talk about sort of that kind of innovative, since we do have quite a lot of land in our community that are part of flood hazard zones, if there's any learnings or best practices that you think were particularly innovative or interesting on this project. The drawings looked great, but I'm not a civil engineer, so lawyers are discussing. I'm not trying to challenge. I'm just curious.
So relating to the flood, I don't think there was very much high-technology items integrated into the design. But we did have to raise the ground floor level a full foot. And so we had to go through a big process with our civil engineer to analyze the site, figure out what we would have to do to avoid the sea level rise. And so this area is in a flood plain and ultimately our ground floor level is raised higher, including the parking area to make sure that we're not impacted in, in case of flood.
Thank you. And I noticed that it'll be respectful to the residents' units too, because they're all above and it also allowed for extra height. So thanks for that. Just curious. Great. And then one last question while I have you up. Because we have our, a public comment to this effect, just to kind of ask, are you planning to enter into a project labor agreement or leverage skilled unionized workers to build the project?
I don't. I defer to.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Eduardo Sagis with the developer. We are going to definitely hire a responsible contractor. And we are going to open an RFP for everyone that wants to be on the project. And ultimately, you know, we have a fiduciary duty with our investors. This project needs to make sense. So we, we take very seriously who we hire for obvious reasons and yeah, that's, that's what I can say about it.
Thank you. So yeah, understood. You don't know yet because you haven't put an RFP out yet.
No, no, it's, it's difficult. And clearly what we cannot is commit to anyone right now and get married to anyone because unfortunately, the project is very tight, given that well, it's been four years in the making. Four years happen a lot of things. And unfortunately, costs have risen significantly and we need to be conscious of that, but we take very seriously who we hire, who we work with, and we always work with very responsible general contractors. And we have a very longstanding relationship with them. We've been developing in Bay Area for twenty-five years, so we've never had any issues.
Wonderful. Thank you. Great. Well, that was the summary. I look forward to hearing how we all feel about parking flexibility, but otherwise just big appreciation for how this project has evolved and particularly the circulation and the unique facades and modulation and consideration of light and livability for all the residents. Thank you.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. I support all my commissioners, fellow commissioners' supportive comments off the top of my head. I don't have a response to, as to the flexibility with the parking, so I might come back to that. I, I just want to make a comment. When you look at the site plan, the design of a building, I feel like you can really tell it maximizes fully the site. And initially, when we saw this project, I felt like the publicly accessible space felt narrow, but now when I look at it, you see the flip side and you see a site being optimized to its fullest. And I appreciate how the massing steps back from the street, which it passed to, I think, in some parts to for the maximum podium height. But in reducing the massing of the building, it uses those moves to create a series of the pool deck on the third floor and the roof decks on the fifth and eighth floors. So it's just really nice how it takes requirements and turns them into opportunities. I, I think I recall there used to be, and actually the staff report says, so there was a small commercial space on the ground floor and it was removed. And I think there were some discussion or comments from the commission that may have affected that decision. So I just wanted to question through the chair to the applicant, maybe shed a little light on that in response to Commissioner Silverstein's comment.
Thank you for the question. So yeah, we removed the retail. It was a long time ago, so Michelle, if you want to chime in, let me know. But originally, we wanted to, to put the retail as a community amenity. And the truth is that it took us a long time to understand the community amenity program from the city. It was a little bit confusing. It was in the works. Some of the items that we could choose from that plan were taken. And ultimately, it became a little bit of an issue on, you know, what's happening if we were to do a, I'm going to make it up, but a bank or a coffee shop or something like that. And then ultimately, we couldn't, we couldn't get someone to occupy it. I believe, if my memory doesn't fail me, is that there was issues with potential enforcement or vacancy issues that we had, given that it was a community amenity that we couldn't foresee. And we were not ready to take on such uncertainty of not being able to know if a bank is going to be willing to take or to lease that space. The truth is that we went back and forth many times. The city has some guidelines as to how to value that community amenity. And after a long back and forth, we decided that it's probably better for the project to do the BMRs. And, and that's, that's what we did. Then on top of that, and the uncertainty of the process and not knowing what was going to happen really for the retail and the truth is that we have probably ten, thirteen mixed-use buildings around the Bay Area that are either in just, you know, in the last maybe five years, we've either put on the market, built, or in entitlements, construction. And retail is suffering in all of them. And so we didn't just want to take that as, you know, we just didn't want to take that, that risk. So I think that addresses the question, I hope.
Yes, no, thank you. Appreciate that.
I was going to say, we did also a foot traffic clearly did not support, you know, and it was not an area where, where the foot traffic analysis were saying that we were going to be successful at putting retail.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Like everyone else, I'm supportive and will be my comments for now. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
I'll go. I'm hugely supportive of the project. I didn't get to see it the first time around, but it sounds like it has benefited from increased work. Looks great to me. My one regret is that My one regret is that, of course, we're developing in this area because this is where it's affordable to build. And this is where we have places where we can build housing. And but when I look at an overview of the land around it and the amenities around it, and the routes to this, you know, the safe route to the nearest grocery store is something I'm always curious about. Or if I'm, if I have a 10 year old, can they go buy a popsicle somewhere without me having to get behind the wheel of a car to get them there? And, you know, for this neighborhood right now, that answer is no. And that's not the fault of the developer. I think that's, you know, partly just bad design decisions that we've inherited that are decades old. But I think as we start to develop this area of Menlo Park, which we've been doing for a decade now, it's really incumbent on us as a city to start to look hard at that Marsh Road corridor and work with other municipalities and with the county to make it safer, because we're adding hundreds of residents and employees to a neighborhood that's basically locked in by freeways and expressways. And it's just not, you know, it's not a great way to live. So beautiful building. It's unfortunate that we haven't created the the infrastructure to make it a more pleasant place to live. And I hope that we accelerate our efforts in those regards. I don't have a strong opinion about the parking flexibility that Commissioner Farrick suggested. I'm curious about what the applicant would like for that.
Sorry, just just a brief comment. Christian maybe is going to say the same thing, but clearly, the more parking, the better for us. There is a reason why we couldn't go further than that. We appreciate the commissioners' point on the flexibility, and we and we like it, and we definitely accept it. If we could do standard spaces, 125, we would do it. But unfortunately, there's always some compromises that we have to do. And so I appreciate the comment, and we'll definitely take it. And maybe, maybe you were gonna say that.
I just, I don't need my nodding head anymore. But the, the only nuance, it would just be helpful if the motion would say something along the lines of that developer election, the waiver would authorize either the parking plan as proposed, or 99 standard spaces. Because under both, under both circumstances, it is a density bonus waiver. We just want clarity in our approval for future investors or whoever else is looking to make sure it's a conforming use, that it's a paper trail that we can have 99 spaces if we elect to do so. Thank you.
So quick follow up. I support adding that flexibility into the waiver.
I do as well.
Excellent. Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to echo what Commissioner Peruzzi was saying. I was not part of the study session, but it seems like it was helpful. And also echo support from other commissioners to have study sessions in the future for similar projects. And yeah, on that note, I did see from the meeting minutes from that study session that there was discussion about guest parking. And it seemed like there was maybe a to do from the developer to look into what the options might be. Because, yeah, I'm assuming if the parking is unbundled within the building, that means that there's going to be cars parked there if someone has like a visitor or whatever. So I was just wondering if the developer might have any updates on guest slash visitor parking for the building, if there are any.
I've been informed there is no guest parking.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Thank you.
Don't really have too much to add to that, but I wanted to provide a little bit of context there, because we did look at it in the very complicated puzzle that we were trying to make on the parking with without the retail, with a common area that we had originally that was bigger. And ultimately, what we did is to try to maximize parking, which, as well as maximizing bike storage and bike parking as well, because the location where the project is, ultimately, we thought it was going to be, you know, if we were to do four or five guest parkings, clearly, it benefits the project more to do actual parkings for for their tenants. So there's really no update there, but that's how we looked at it. We did think about putting guest parking, but it was going to be in detriment of, you know, four or five parkings that a tenant could use. And because of the location, we knew it was going to be very beneficial.
That makes sense. Thanks. Yeah, I guess my comment, I don't know, out into the ether is that there's all these office buildings in that neighborhood that I'm assuming. So during the day, it seems like there is parking on the street for visitors to use if like a friend is visiting or whatever. But the main issue to me seems the overnight parking because of our city ordinance. And there's all these office buildings nearby that I'm assuming are not using their parking at night. So it would be great if the developers are able to find some way to allow people to utilize those spas. That may not be realistic. But yeah, it's a tricky situation.
So we are already trying to do that. We're in conversations with our neighbors, with the Gray Star Building next door. We know that more parking would benefit the project, either guest parking or for securing the BMR parking, which, by the way, clearly, our incentives are always aligned. So we don't want any empty units. So, you know, eventually, that's never going to be an issue for us. But that's, you know, sidetracked here. But we are talking with office buildings. We're talking with our neighbors. We're talking with a Gray Star Building next door to us to see if they have any additional parking that they could potentially rent to us, that we could use if they need, if they're not using it.
Awesome. Thank you. That's good to hear. Hopefully, a solution can be found. I had a question for staff, just a clarifying question from the state density bonus law. So there are concessions and there are waivers. And the way the staff report was written, it said concessions are things that deviate from the zoning ordinance, and waivers are things that deviate from objective development standards, which are part of the zoning ordinance. So could you please clarify what the difference is between those two?
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to do that. So the standards, they're similar with, but slightly different benefits. Incentives and concessions are modifications to development standards that result in actual or identifiable cost reductions to the project. So they can be either physical development standards that increase development cost, or programmatic development standards that are related to the overall cost of providing the project. Waivers are related to physical development standards. The standard for a waiver is, the city has an obligation to waive or reduce development standards that would physically preclude development of the project at the density it's entitled to build, or with the incentives and concessions that it's entitled to. So they're related strictly to those physical components that affect the shape, the form, the building envelope, and things like that. So the city's objective development standards that apply, but that would restrict the physical envelope and form of the building, can be appropriate for waivers. And the concessions are, again, focused on changes that would reduce the cost of providing the development.
Thank you. So is it safe to say that even though? So yeah, for the concessions, like in this case, there's the utility pool, dual plumbing, and the rent amount. I guess two of those are physical, but they're not part of the actual building itself. And then the third one is more of like a programmatic thing that's not a physical property, am I?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's exactly right. So that the, they take the plumbing, for example, that doesn't relate directly to the design of the building, the way that it accommodates the density and the units that the project is trying to deliver. But it definitely delivers a cost savings to the project to not have to comply with that. So that's why that one's classified as a concession. And I think that the same logic applies to the other two.
Thank you. That's helpful. Yeah, I don't have any other questions. Just my overall comment on the project is, yeah, like everyone else that's spoken so far, I definitely support having as much housing as possible so close to meta, since they have office space, especially with the kind of end of seeming end of remote work. There's office space to accommodate, I believe, enough employees equal to the entire population of Menlo Park. So clearly, not all of them live here. Having more space for them to live near work is great. There's obviously other employers in the area. So generally, I support the project. I think, you know, the developer, I recommend the developer in using as many of these like bonuses and incentives as possible to increase the density all the way from 30 dwelling units an acre to 170. And including the things that we as a community have said we want, which is low income housing. I think many would say that, you know, we wish there was more. But again, you know, we don't want to make the perfect the enemy of the good. I also appreciate the developer adding so much bike parking. Maybe you were listening to our previous discussion with the Sheridan site, where that was a different discussion. So in this case, there's tons of bike parking. I personally, I'm not too concerned about the lack of car parking. I'm hoping that, yes, it's not going to be an ideal environment for biking. But I think this is where we need to be. We need to be lowering car parking spaces and increasing bike parking spaces to incentivize the type of travel that we want to see. Given what Mr. Prada said, hopefully, there's some infrastructure improvements in the area. I was looking at, you know, Google Maps, and it seems like, yeah, on Haven Avenue, which is kind of a butts two sides of this project, one of the sides has bike lanes. And then there's a stop sign, you turn a corner, and the bike lanes mysteriously vanish for a block. And then they sort of kind of return until you get to the Bay Shore. So that definitely seems like a suboptimal experience for a building that is really trying to incentivize biking. So I'm a little puzzled as to why this, you know, the road improvements don't include a bike lane on Haven Avenue going along, I guess that would be Marsh, perhaps because adding it just for the length of the building and not the entire street doesn't really make sense, which I would agree with. I hate bike lanes that mysteriously disappear in the middle of the block. But yeah, that's something definitely we should be thinking about adding if we want to, if we're trying to encourage people to bike, and we're trying to encourage developers to favor biking over car parking, we should also be on the infrastructure side, supporting that as much as we can. So that's my one comment. But overall, happy to support the project. I decided to see more housing going up in a much needed area. Thank you.
Thank you. I was here when we first saw this project back in December of 23. It was a great project then. It is a great project now. As other commissioners have pointed out, a lot of the feedback has been incorporated. I specifically, when we talked in December of 23, was concerned about the proposed commercial space, not because it's a bad thing. As many commissioners have pointed out, it could be a great thing. But as proposed, it was too small. It had low ceilings. There's low foot traffic. There are, and, and other bigger developments in that area don't all, don't have commercial space. So I think it was a fairly easy thing to extrapolate that it would have been a challenging business. I appreciate that you considered, even with those parameters, like, could it be a bank? Could it be other things? Because those are important questions, as other commissioners have pointed out, in that neighborhood. But given the limitations that were proposed for the commercial space, I absolutely think that the best community amenity to be provided would have been, is, is what you've come up with, which is the affordable housing. That's the thing that at least I personally care the most, care the most about, is increasing the number of affordable housing units, followed by just increasing the number of housing units. So thank you for doing that. I think that represents a progression and a win. I do have a couple of quick follow up questions, particularly just, again, related to some of the the BMR and parking intersection questions, primarily to inform things that this commission and other commissions in the city could do in the future. And I'll have follow up questions for staff along these lines. So I know that the endpoint decision was that parking is uncoupled, as required by city requirements, and that I'm, I believe I interpreted your comments correctly, the pricing would be uniform across residents. Okay. Was there, were there any options considered for pricing differentiation based on whether residents were market, living in a market rate or BMR units? And, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not something that we've given it a lot of thought. I mean, the, the pricing determination, when we build this, hopefully, two, two and a half years from now, when we deliver it, whatever the market is, whatever, you know, the situation of parking around, that's going to determine what the pricing that we could charge, it will be different. The truth is that it, you know, sometimes in other buildings, we use it as an incentive, like what we're trying to do. Sometimes we offer the parking for free. Sometimes we do three weeks for free. Sometimes it depends, it really depends on on case by case. So it could be different. But there's not, it's not something that right now, we can say, you know, we know other developers very close to the area. They charge something in between $100 to $175. And they, it's very clear in their website. So it depends on whether you have a compact, if you have a standard. It could be an incentive built into your lease, based on maybe a 13 month lease, rather than a 10 month lease, or whatever that is. So it's always dynamic. And as I said before, we are the first ones that we want to make sure all units are occupied. We operate many buildings in California, Utah, Idaho, Texas, many other states. And we know, obviously, to, to, we know when to adjust to the market. And if we need to provide concessions that include free parking or free rent or anything like that, we're flexible with that. So it's, it would be, we wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a good idea for us to say it's going to be $150, and that's it. It just doesn't work that way.
Thank you for that additional detail. I hope, I hope it can be incorporated into future thinking that the city does as it relates to the intersection of, of parking and setting BMR housing rates. Follow up question, it's not, it's not specific to parking. The request to remove the city's 75% cap, based on the, what's the exact wording here, the comparable market rate rents. We had a very constructive and helpful explanation here tonight, that it really only applies to the moderate range, so four units. Back of the envelope, for me, says that's like a few thousand dollars. What, I mean, in terms of, so, I mean, I'm just wondering, perhaps I have misunderstood somewhere along the lines that this is a fairly small rounding error in the math of the project.
It's, it's about $450,000 when you capitalize the project. So it's not insignificant. And the
Over the lifetime? Over the lifetime?
Yeah, exactly. So the way we look at it is, I think, moderate in 2024, 120% AMI, it's about 156, 160,000. The rent that you can charge on a studio, maximum rent is about 3,800. You're never going to get a, be in a studio on 3,800. So the market is below what that rent is. Our analysis, based on comps and what we're expecting, the building ultimately is going to rent at, for a studio, could be around 23 to 2,500. It varies based on the square footage. And so if you cap that to 75%, that's going to be around 1,700, right? When you, when you understand the delta, the income differential ultimately between the 1,700 and the 2,300, you, you know, capitalize that into a, whatever cap rate the market is asking for, it's about $400,000 in the residual value of the building.
Which is like a multi-decade, right, calculation?
Or not, because it could be that we stabilize the project and we sell it two years later. So someone, whoever is going to buy this building is going to underwrite the rents and whatever they are. So if they know that they need to cap at 75%, the delta of that, ultimately, they're going to take it against their cap rate, and that's about $400,000. they're going to take it against their cap rate, and that's about $400,000.
Okay, thank you. And then there was one final question that was brought up in December that was regarding, built on the, the shared parking, visitor parking, and Uber drop-off. There was some question about whether or not ride sharing and a curb space for ride sharing had been considered, because that's one of the traffic management programs. Any further consideration from the last time we met?
So ride sharing has been considered and discussed, but unfortunately, the site and all of the requirements around it, the existing site conditions, the trash pickup, we're not able to accommodate it.
Good, thank you. So that, not, not, no modification from, from the last time? Okay, thank you. Question to staff, just, just following up. There was a helpful explanation given about how that 75% of comparable market rate cap is calculated, that it's on a per-project basis, and it's based on comparables that are, it sounds like city-specific or neighborhood-specific, and also looking to reflect whatever the, the building type is of the, the thing that's being priced. So it's going to be much more specific and nuanced than the other component of our BMR guidelines, which is about AMI to an entire county, right? So that covers, you know, bay to the ocean, and a whole lot of different income ranges and different types of, of buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Have we considered making more transparent or standardizing the process that we use to calculate that set of, of comparable market rate rents?
To adding, just to make sure I understand the question, adding specificity to the process for calculating the market rate rent that would then serve as the, the ceiling when reduced by 75%?
Yeah. And specificity, and, and I think I'm probably more asking also about just transparency?
Yeah, I, I think, so it's, it's not something that is on our agenda tonight, so we won't go into too much detail on it. But I do know that as conversations around this project and others have been happening, there's definitely an interest to revisiting the BMR guidelines and making them, exactly as you said, but more specific and more transparent, so that there's a more clear understanding in advance, there'd just be easier to use. So I don't know if there's been a focus on that in particular, but as that effort comes forward to update the guidelines, we can definitely have more discussions about what would be helpful there to achieve that goal.
Thank you. I know that that's not necessarily something we're making a decision about tonight, but I think it's something that I could see the, this commission or the Housing Commission recommending when the BMR guidelines are brought up for update. In addition, I also, I think the treatment of parking as an amenity versus a utility is something that could be part of those conversations, too. I think other commissioners have eloquently and intelligently asked most of the other questions that I had in my notes. To other commissioners, Commissioner Silverstein?
I have a question for staff. In response to the statement about there not being enough foot traffic to support retail, or the risk of retail success relative to residential, I noticed that we've approved over 1,500 new housing units in the Bayfront area, along Independence Drive, Jefferson, Constitution, and Haven Avenue over the last years. And if I recall correctly, none of them have substantial retail presence. So I recognize that, and I agree that for any individual project, we're happy to prioritize housing and allow it to continue without any specific retail component. But now we get to the point where we kind of take that at infinitum, and now we have thousands of people with not a lot of stuff in their neighborhood. And so my question for the future is, you know, considering we're a planning commission, to what extent can we be proactive and attempt to plan around this instead of just being reactive to any individual developer proposal?
So it's, it's a good question. Thank you for it. Let's see, so yes, you're, you're correct. There are a number of housing developments that have been approved, a few that have been constructed, very limited amounts of square footage in, in relation to the number of dwelling units for commercial. You know, from the city's perspective, we certainly do have a general plan that focuses on creating a mixed-use environment in the Bayfront area. You know, I think one of the guiding goals, live, work, play, from the 2016 update. And so we are seeing a lot of the residential units coming online. It is certainly something that staff discusses with applicants in terms of like mixed-use developments, how to encourage and, you know, obtain more of those neighborhoods serving uses in the area. From the commission's perspective, I mean, we do have a general plan, we do have a zoning ordinance, we do have objective standards for housing developments that make it somewhat difficult to, you know, at, at this stage, potentially change any of those parameters within development, of course. So going back to the first part of the question, I mean, during the development review process, staff is involved in discussing with applicants, you know, kind of these possibilities, and we do work with applicants. Now, sometimes that has yielded some small commercial spaces. Other development projects, like the Will Village project, has a substantial amount of commercial retail, you know, obviously, that's approved. Obviously, it's going through the next stage of permitting review. No construction has broken ground, of course. So there are those projects on the horizon, but, you know, not every project's going to be able to accommodate, you know, a substantial amount of commercial space. And it is something that we look at case by case at the city in terms of working with applicants to try to encourage that. We certainly can't require it. The code right now does not require a specific amount of commercial for residential that's not built in as an objective requirement. So hopefully, that kind of helps answer your question. Not really, though.
It, it answers my question on how things have developed, doesn't really answer the question on what we could do in a proactive nature, but it sounds like it's an ordinance question of, to what extent should we require it and then potentially pedal backward on those requirements if any given development didn't warrant or justify that? But that would be an ordinance thing.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think in, in terms of the planning questions, purview, reviewing development projects, that's not part of the, the development project review. Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Farrak?
Thank you. One of the comments I lost track of before I wanted to make, and then I thought it might be useful to kind of clarify for anyone that's still trying to figure out this parking flexibility concept that I'd floated, I wanted to kind of just talk through that a little bit. So first, just wanted to appreciate the unit mix with a higher number of units that are smaller, studios, one-bedrooms. That's great. It'll meet a need that's not met in this location. So that's the comment that I'd forgotten to meet or make in my earlier set of comments. Regarding the parking, one reason why I, I want to provide that flexibility is that while the, while the project is not able to meet the one-to-one car parking to unit ratio that the city would like applicants to meet, due to the very high bike parking spaces, my sensitivity to that requirement changes, because it is such a bike-friendly, and while I know there's issues with kind of the infrastructure that surround the project, I feel like this is, this project can be part of the impetus to change that in the future. So specifically, in the, in the application, they are proposing, correct me if I'm wrong, 140, 104 spaces, 48 of which are compact. And it's, and my concern was a little different than the Housing Commission's concern in that how useful they would be, because compact spaces are really tiny and just sometimes not all that useful. So my thought was that, and it was helpful information to know that they, they, the trade-off is that they could make five less spaces, 99 spaces, and they would be standard size, and therefore accommodate a more flex, more wide range of vehicles and/or, yeah, anyway, vehicles. And so I just wanted to provide that so that they can proceed with what they are applying for today, and then they know that it would be built in to be available to switch that, you know, re-stripe that section of the lot without having to go through a big process to do so. And it sounds like the applicant likes that idea. They also expressed that they prefer to do more spaces. It's probably a nice way to have a little revenue for five more spaces. But I guess my point was just that I'm not worried about, it's just a little under the one-to-one parking ratio, and two, there's a ton of bike parking, and three, I'd want the spaces that are there to actually be usable and not be too small to make use of. And so if they find they're not renting them because there's not enough people that want compact spots, let them make them standard spots, should they choose to do so. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm totally on board for providing flexibility as the developer sees fit, as per traffic, like car demand, and would be happy to make a motion as such.
And before we get into the specific of that, perhaps staff could suggest both a mechanism and language for doing this?
Yeah.
In the frame, or the framing of the existing proposals, yeah.
Thank you. If, if it is a, a concept that the commission wants to move forward with, we would suggest that the motion that you make along with the project, should you elect to approve the project, reflect that you would be amending the approval for the applicant's density bonus request related to parking, to approve a waiver for 104 spaces, 56 code-compliance spaces, and 48 compact spaces as proposed, or at the applicant's election, 99 code-compliance spaces. And then we have some other points in the resolution, which would require conforming updates, and the commission could provide direction to staff to make those conforming amendments to the final resolution's recitals and findings, so that it was internally consistent.
Thank you. I didn't catch every single word of that, but I got the sense of the waiver with the two options being parking as, as proposed in the current resolution, or with the applicant's request, the 99 full-sized spaces. That's an option. And then I believe earlier, it was mentioned, though, that if the applicant were interested in making this modification, it's a fairly straightforward administrative approval? Is that correct?
Correct. So if, if the waiver is approved with this flexibility that we're discussing, then updating the plans to reflect that would be consistent with the approval that you've granted and could be done at an administrative level as a, as a substantially compliant modification. It wouldn't be changing the waiver that you'd already approved, because the waiver would build that flexibility.
So the waiver makes it an administrative approval? Without the waiver, it would not be an administrative approval?
Correct. If the, if the waiver were, the way it's currently worded, without that flexibility, then modifications to the waivers could be interpreted to require subsequent planning commission review to change.
Thank you.
And one note, if I may just quickly, we might want to reflect that the parking be up to 99, just in case, as, as staff was reminding me, just in case as the architect does the layout, they can't, they can only fit 98 or something to get the dimensions right, we give them a little flexibility and not be too prescriptive there.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrak, does that adhere to sort of the spirit of, of what you are looking to accomplish?
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
I have a quick follow-up question on that last statement. If we theoretically give the applicant up to, an election of up to 99 spaces, that gives them the, not that they would exercise this, option to provide two. I'm not suggesting that is our intention, and so when we're formalizing this resolution, should there be an actual number below which we would not allow the applicant to go?
I apologize. We, we were conferring on a few things, and I, I think I got your question, but just so I don't make an assumption, could you just restate the actual question for us?
Yeah, so the proposed language for giving the applicant flexibility on converting some compact spaces into standard spaces, the, the proposed language would have been to allow them to make up to 99 regular-sized spaces, just in case they can't fit exactly 99, and we didn't, wouldn't want them to have to come back. However, specific language of up to 99 would, in theory, allow them to have two parking spaces without being in, not in compliant. Therefore, is there a number below which we should not the, not allow the applicant to go when it comes to the standard spaces? And I don't know exactly what the conversion is between the mix of 50/50 compact regular, converting to all regular, and if we say 95, is that fine? Question mark.
So, thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. I'll try to answer part of the question, and then I'll defer to either Eric or Kyle. So initially, when the project was designed, they were able to fit in 99 stalls, parking stalls, compliance stalls, which is why the applicant did mention the 99 when they were up on the dais. So I believe they have the ability to reduce from 104 parking stalls with a mix of standard and compact to all standard-sized stalls of 99 spaces. We do recognize that we were trying to provide a little bit more flexibility to that number, but we also do recognize that the applicant was able to provide that 99 space prior to redesigning and providing the compact and the 104 spaces. So I think we can keep the language to 99 instead of up to 99, but I'll defer to Eric.
Yeah, the, the other way to approach that flexibility, if we're interested in keeping them, as you were saying, close, close to 99, but not, would be to do as Ms. Khan suggested, and, and approve it as 99 standard or code-compliance spaces, with the recognition that if they deviate by one or two spaces because of layout, we would also have the discretion to find that that is substantially compliant with the approval that you're making tonight. So we, if it really is a deviation just for that spacing, we probably can proceed without the up-to language. So yeah, I'll, I'll pause there without the risk of making it more complicated, but I think that, to speak to your concern, we could eliminate the up-to language, but still recognize that minor deviations would, would be substantially compliant with that.
And a follow-up question to provide even further flexibility. We've been discussing the binary options of, you know, 56 to 48 versus 99 all. What language could we use in order to give the applicant flexibility to convert any number of those compact parking spaces into regular compliant-sized ones, as long as they don't go below? they don't go below a total of 99, give or take one or two, to ensure that they are substantially compliant with the permit?
Well, and I think if I'm understanding the question correctly, we would, so, yeah, we would basically have the opportunity to do a slider where they could have, say, 80 standard spaces or eight, and then a smaller number of compact spaces.
That's exactly my intent. And previously, we're talking about kind of the binary situations, and I just want to make sure that no one cares if they convert 20 of them and not the rest, and it should be fine.
And I think, if I'm visualizing it correctly, that your vision would also, basically, they would still end up with a number between approximately 99 and 104 spaces, just the exact dimensions could be flexed to reflect.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah, the market, okay, yeah, I think we can, as the commission continues to deliberate, we can look at the language a little bit and build that in as well.
If I can, through the chair, just offer a suggestion that it simply read 99 to 104, you know, and then it's a number between there, as you just said.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the, I think that we're mostly in agreement, the one thing that we want to make sure that we don't lose is that it doesn't, the number doesn't go below the 56 standard spaces that are currently proposed, so they can go up from there, keep the number in the range, but not go below the number of standard spaces that are currently approved.
It's, you're, he's kind of indicating to me, yeah, I don't think we ever discussed the idea of approving more compact spaces, it was actually to allow more standard and fewer compact spaces if the applicant, if the developer wants to do that, if they find that's the best way to go to make the project operate well.
So do we need perfect, exact, specific clarity on the choice of words at this moment? I defer to staff. May we proceed with a resolution that incorporates the concept of no fewer than 56 standard and a total number that ranges, a total number of spaces that ranges between 99 and 104?
Yeah, and then if you also provide then the direction to staff to update the resolution, the final resolution with conforming language to reflect that direction, I think that that would be adequate.
Okay, thank you for that help. So I think we have a mechanism identified for incorporating Commissioner Farrak's suggestion and recommendation, and I'm searching for other commissioner feedback or questions at this time, and if there is none, then for a motion. I would like to make a motion that we approve this development with the addendum that we just discussed. All right, we have a first from Commissioner Peruzzi. To approve the resolution in support of the use permit, architectural control BMR agreement with the amended language that supports flexibility for the applicant, to have a total number of parking places between 99 and 104 while maintaining at least 56 full-sized parking places, and to move, to put that language across all necessary locations within the resolution.
Can and should we also formalize the understanding that if the layout does not allow for exactly 99 full-sized parking spaces, that it would be under staff's discretion to consider whether or not that would still be under substantial compliance?
Fair question. My understanding, based on what council has told us, is that that is baked into the standard processes.
Yeah, I think.
We don't have to be explicit about that.
The, I would, the current conditions of approval give staff the flexibility to make that determination, so you don't need to make a further change.
No more additional verbal gymnastics are required. We have a first on the table. All right, I'll go ahead and make a second.
Don't, you go.
All right, I'm in. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Peruzzi, yes. Commissioner Doe, yes. Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is seven in favor. Thank you to the applicant team, thank you to staff for very constructive discussion, explanations, and ultimately, conclusion. Thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing component of our agenda and move into Item G, informational items. Mr. Prada, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming planning commission meetings and/or agendas?
Yes, thank you. So the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is March 10th, so we are tracking two use permits for single-family homes on that agenda, as well as the 2024 annual reviews of the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, and our first annual review of our Environmental Justice Element Annual Report. So we'll be bringing those two items forward as well for a review and recommendation to the council. And that concludes my updates. Happy to answer any questions.
I am very much looking forward to both of those agenda items, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, then I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:35 PM. Many thanks to everybody.